My name is Sandra Schaefer. I'm the president of the Democratic Women's Club of Greater Broward. And today, I have the pleasure of talking to Dr. Jeff Holness. He's one of the candidates for the Broward County School Board Group Nine, which is the at-large seat, right? And so that means that all of the, everyone in the 31 cities that make up Broward County can vote for Dr. Jeff Holness. So before I keep talking, I'm gonna let him introduce himself, and then we'll talk about some important dates throughout the interview.
Okay, so Sandra, I'd like to thank you so much for inviting me. I truly appreciate sharing my thoughts and views with your viewers. And I also would like to thank the Democratic Women's Club of Greater Broward. I appreciate the invitation as well. Well, I am Jeff Holness. I've been a longtime educator in Broward County for over 20 years. I was a teacher for about 17 years in Broward County Public Schools, and I currently run and own a Kuman Math and Reading Center. So I've had over 22 years in education and in teaching. Now, I also was a, you know, I completed my undergrad and my graduate degrees in Broward County, and I'm a graduate of high school right here in Broward County as well. I did my undergraduate.
You have to give a shout out to your high school.
Okay, let's give a shout out to the Panthers Dillon High School. I graduated from. Yes, and I went to FAU and did my undergrad, and I went on to Nova Southeastern University to do a master's in curriculum design and a doctorate in education, specializing in organizational leadership. Now, I will be, when elected, the only male and the only father on Broward County School Board. There is no father, and I believe that perspective will add diversity to the board that is so needed in order to have an inclusive input in terms of our policy and decision-making processes. Now, in addition to that, I have very strong school leadership experience. I was the school advisory council chair for multiple schools. I was the ESOL coordinator as well, and diversity awareness committee chair along with many other school leadership experiences. I also founded, Sandra, a program called Student Learning Communities. And this was at Lyons Creek Middle School. And that program actually was to help kids who are in the lower percentile to improve their learning gains on the standardized test. And we had over 400 students in that program. It was all volunteer. Most of what I've done with the district, besides being a teacher, was volunteering. And we were able to get significant learning gains from these kids. I believe another school had actually emulated what we did at Lyons Creek with likely similar results. So I am running because I want to create a brighter future for children in Broward County. We are living in times of uncertainty, a lot of ambiguities. I mean, these are really unprecedented times. We've had to go through the issue of what has happened at Stoneman Douglas, but we also had now to go through the coronavirus pandemic, the protesting as a result of police brutality. And these are things that will affect our kids when they go back in August. We also have to look at how we're gonna be able to reopen schools in August. So I think it needs someone with the right experience, with the right knowledge, the right attitude, and the right energy to really go there and be able to navigate the stormy waters of this era and move our district forward. And I believe I am that person. I believe I have that experience, and I am willing and ready to serve the children of Broward County in a different capacity on Broward County School Board.
Alrighty, so you said a lot. I was taking notes, so there's some follow-up questions I'm gonna ask you about. But let's just start from the beginning. What is the role of a school board member? You know, because a lot of us don't really know. We hear it, but we don't really understand that. What is a role of a school board member? What is it that they really have the power to do? Because some people might go there and ask you something, and that might not really be what it is that you can do. So tell me, or tell us, what's the role of a school board member?
Right, well, you know, the basic role of a school board member, and it goes beyond that, but the basic role of a school board member is to set policies that will guide the district and basically geared towards maximum student learning outcome in the county. Another role of the school board members is to hire or fire a superintendent, right? So that's the second, the second major role that a school board member would serve. Now, in addition to all of that, the school board member has a moral and ethical responsibility to build cohesion in the community and to look out for the concerns of the community, to look out for the concerns of parents, and help to guide the district so we can move students forward and we can achieve maximum learning outcome. But the basic role is to really set policy to really, and also to look at the budget and to make sure that we are allocating funds in the right areas, as well as to hire and fire the superintendent.
Okay, so where would the school board members get the budget from that they look at? Doesn't that come from the superintendent, or does that come from someone else?
Right, well, the budget is presented to the board from the district. And then the board looks at the budget to approve the budget. So that's pretty much the process. And so the board's responsibility is to approve this school budget in addition to provide rating for the superintendent as to whether or not he, his job performance is satisfactory, as well as to set policies for the district that would affect student learning outcome.
All right, so there's word on the street that some people wanna want this position now, and some people got the position the last time because they want the superintendent out. What is your position on that? Are you, would you be one of those people if the vote came up to get rid of the superintendent before his contract expires? Would you vote to get rid of the superintendent?
Well, you know, Sandra, absolutely not. And, and you know.
Why?
Right, there are groups with polarizing views on that, but I'll tell you this. The superintendent, since he's been in Broward County, has achieved significant learning outcomes for our students. I'll give you an example. The graduation rate went from 71% on average in 2011 to now 86%. We've seen that graduation rates for kids all across the board, African-American kids, Hispanic kids, white kids. The graduation rate basically have improved all across the board.
Okay, let's talk about that. So when you say graduating rate, that means they actually leave there with a diploma, or they leave with their certificate of attendance?
Well, my understanding is leaving with a diploma, right? So we have 86% graduation rate right now, and it's one of the highest in years. Now, in addition to that, we've seen other major accomplishments by the superintendent. For example, we lead the state in industry certification. We, under Superintendent Runzi, we had the first military academy. We had no F schools in Broward County under Superintendent Runzi as well. And there's just so many accomplishments that we've seen now. Yes, there are some things that we are concerned about as a district. And I hear those parents, and I hear those concerns. For example, there's concern about expediting the process of completing the renovation aspect of the smart bond. And there is some legitimate argument to that. And for me, I will work with the superintendent, with the, you know, with the board to see how we can move those projects forwards. But interestingly though, Sandra, the projects are actually now being moved a lot faster because kids have not been in schools, in the schools on campus since March, and, you know, beginning April. So as a result, construction is taking place, and repairs are being done on the roofs and so on. And I heard that the process is even speeding up even more. So I'm hoping that we can actually get this done. I heard that they're going to be hiring a new program manager if they have not already done so, either to replace or to supplement the company we now have.
Okay, so you said something about there have been no F schools under Runzi, right? I mean, he couldn't do that by himself. He's not the one that. So what kind of policies or procedures, or what do you think he implemented that was able, that made it possible for there to be no F schools in Broward County?
Right, well, you know, when you look at any organization, obviously, it's a collective effort of all stakeholders, right? It's not just the superintendent that we should give credit. But when we look at his leadership, and the reason I brought that up, when we look at his leadership, the bottom line is if we weren't doing well, it would stop at his table as well. So we have to, we have to also give credit to his leadership. But on a collective level, it is the collective effort of teachers, of students and their hard work, of our parents, that create this, this learning outcome that we've seen in the district. So I would like to clarify that it is not just the superintendent that we should credit, but we should credit the entire district for these learning gains that we've had. And I think it's a collective effort of the programs we've implemented within schools and the focus that we've had on individual schools in terms of trying to maximize their learning. And every school has different initiatives to improve their students, but I think on a collective level, our focus has been student learning outcome in Broward County.
Okay, so like, you said some things about the board. You said that there's a lot of work going on. What are two things, if you could, change about the board that you would? If any, maybe there's nothing, but if.
Current board?
About, yeah, about how the, the way the board is working. Are they doing such a fantastic job that they don't need anybody new? Or are there some things you would change about the way they're doing business?
Right, well, you know, I am running for an open seat. Robin Bartman is leaving. So, you know, I don't, none of us is running in that seat to replace anyone because it is actually an open seat. But I think, you know, there's always room for improvement with any governing organization and any governing board. Now, what I would like to see on the board is that it works more in a unified way. Sometimes there is, you know, some combative situations that they have on the board. And I think that we can, we can disagree in.
It's not passion?
Well, passion is good. There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with passion, but there's some.
You know, we get all mad when y'all be trying to call what we're doing and beside us is being passionate about our positions, okay?
Well, look, you know, Sandra, there's nothing wrong with passion, but we have to be careful we're not leaning towards aggression as well, you know? So I think there's, I think there's a balance, and I don't mind having energetic, you know, conversations and having some conflicts and some good constructive discourse, even if there's some.
That's love in dysfunctional families.
Well, true. You know, but at the same time, we have to remember that we are representing the public. And when we're representing the public, it's important to show respect for each other. And we can respectfully disagree on issues. We don't necessarily will agree on everything, but I think how we, how we carry ourselves in a professional way is really important as a reflection of the board to the public. So I'd like to see a little bit more unity, more collaboration, more cooperation, and more, you know.
The forum.
You know, and, and, you know, for the most part, for the most part, the board is, 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 in my opinion, for the most part, you know, the board has a lot of passion. Each person on the board is passionate about specific things. I just think we have to be careful when we are passionate that we're not leaning on towards unnecessary aggression. But we are all, I think everyone on the board has the same goal. They wanna see our children do better. We just have different views on how to get there, you know? And my, I would say if there was anything to criticize is that I hope to see that we are able to disagree in a very professional way and understand that we are all in the same, we all have the same goal. We may have different roles in which to meet those goals.
Okay, so how much, what role does the board have in teachers' pay? Because that's, that's like a really big thing, right? Like, teachers wanna make more money, and people are saying that when they get on the board, they gonna make sure teachers get more money. Can the board members really make teachers, make sure that teachers get more money?
Well, you know, the board members approve the budget. And it's important that we look at the budget, line item by line item, to make sure that when it's presented to us that the district did everything it can to provide the maximum compensation and benefits to our teachers. The budget is a $4 billion budget. 2.6 billion of that budget is in general funds. About 65% of the money in general funds goes towards teacher benefit and compensation. Now, I think what the teachers are, the teachers are asking is, the teachers wanna know, did the school board look at the budget, line item by line item, to ensure that there's nowhere else on the budget that we could cut to provide better pay for teachers? So in that sense, it's important as a school board member that we listen to the concerns of our teachers because they're the ones that will maximize learning outcome for our students in the classroom. And if they're not happy, it will come out as well into, into the way they feel at work, into the morale they have at work. And we don't want teachers to have to go out and having to do two, three jobs and then having to go to schools and teach students. So I think that they do have the right, and they do have a legitimate argument in seeking to enhance their pay and making sure that we are not wasting money in any other areas and that we are maximizing their pay by looking at the budget carefully. Now, with that being said, Sandra, it must be noted that the school board has a limited budget. So it doesn't matter, even if we should give teachers the best we possibly could, it would still not be enough because the state does not provide enough money to the district to pay teachers what they're worth. So there has to be advocacy beyond our local school district. We must advocate as a district, and we must advocate collectively as a state to try to get more money from Tallahassee, right? Because the school districts are funded in two ways. They're funded by sales tax, and they're also funded by what we call required local effort, which is your military, right? Now, in the last few years, the millage that is used and calculated to fund public schools, that millage rate has been declining year after year, yet teachers are not properly compensated. So it doesn't make sense that we're declining the millage rate, and then, and then at the same time, we have kids who need resources, we have teachers who need to be better paid. I think that most of us will not mind paying a little bit more on our millage if we're going to get a much better quality service for our children. So I think unfortunately, it seems that sometimes in Tallahassee there is an assault on public education. At least, that's the impression that we get because I think if we, if we examine the millage rate, if we take a careful look at our sales tax, we may be able to provide more benefits and more compensation for teachers. So I hear what the teachers are saying locally. We also need to look at statewide how we advocate for more funding for teachers.
So there's gonna be a couple of things with that. Does the millage rate comes from property taxes? Or does it? I don't, I'm not sure. Does it come from property taxes?
Well, yes, if you pay, you know, if you look at your bill, you will see part of your, if you own a home, you will see that part of it actually is, is from, part of it goes towards the school district, right? And I, and I believe basically, if you look at, I don't know what the exact rate is. I think it's like 6.5, something, 6.53 or 4, that is a millage rate that goes towards school for Broward County, right? So they use that millage rate to collect money, to put in that part of money that goes to schools within districts all over the state of Florida, right?
Is that part of the reason why some schools get more resources than others? Because there's some of the underserved communities that are in Broward County where there's not a lot of homeownership, right? Most of the people that live in that area, they live in rentals, they live in apartments. So I don't know, they're not collecting as much state, you know, taxes on real estate as an area, you know, maybe West Broward or Weston or something like that. So does that have an effect on the type of resources that a public school get? And if it does, is that right?
Well, it's not, I wouldn't say it's area-specific because there's, you know, the millage is charged and for different districts throughout the state. And then the state basically divvy that money up to the different districts all across Florida. So, you know, when you look at the distributing of resources, that's a whole nother matter because the school district gets a certain amount of money from Tallahassee to run the district. So, you know, it doesn't really function the way you mentioned, Sandra.
Oh, it doesn't, okay.
Right, where if I, if I, if a community in Broward is paying, is paying less in, or less homeownership, so they're paying less taxes, they get less resources. Because it goes in a general pot for the entire state, right?
Why does that happen then? Why does it, there's some schools, they got, I heard some schools got mold. They don't get as much books.
Right, right.
Facilities are old, they can't get paint. You know, and some other places have high-tech everything.
And that is unfortunate because that has to do with equitable distribution of resources. And, you know, I was in a, I was in a forum the other night, and they mentioned equal distribution. And I don't believe, I think we need to separate the meaning of the two, right? Equal distribution means everyone gets the same. But everyone should not get the same because there might be some communities with a much greater need than other communities. So I think when we distribute resources, it should be based on the need of the community, right? Because if you, if you think about it, a community in a more affluent area may not need as much resources as a community in an economically disadvantaged area.
Okay, but can the board do something about, like, improving the situation at some of the schools that need more resources? What can we, how, who is it that needs to be in place or get elected to make sure that some of these underserved schools get at least, you know, they should get as much as the other school, but if not the same amount, let them get close to what they're getting right now. Who is it that we need to talk to about that?
Well, you know, residents normally voice their concern to the board. The board may voice their concern to the superintendent and so on. But I think that what we're looking at is how we, how we distribute resources in an equitable manner based on need. Because if you give, if, for example, if you have a kid in an affluent community, right? Whereby you give certain resources, maybe computers or certain other materials, and those kids can already afford to purchase those things, or they don't need those things. But in disadvantaged communities, you don't have those, you know, you don't have adequate amount of resources to then distribute to those students in economically disadvantaged communities. It doesn't make sense. So I think it does make sense to distribute resources based upon need as opposed to equal resources for everyone. It should be equitable resources whereby we're focusing more on that qualifying word, need, as opposed to giving everyone the same.
Right, and I agree with you that everything doesn't have to, because something is equal doesn't mean that is fair, right? Because sometimes, yeah, because you don't have to give everybody the same amount for it to be fair because some person or something may not need the same thing, right? Like, because we're not always all started on the same, on the same level playing field, right? So there's some instance to make everybody equal. You're gonna have to give somebody just a little bit more of a boost or more of a boost in order for you to have some sort of fairness going on.
Correct, correct, exactly. Because, you know, and that's why I talk about equitable distribution. We have to make sure that we are creating a level playing field for all of our students as opposed to equally distributing resources to everyone, meaning to kids who actually don't really need certain resources.
Yes, um, yes, I definitely agree that there has to be a way to say that. So let's talk about, you said that you're gonna be the only dad on the board, and gonna be, and you're gonna be a dad of color, right? I'm not gonna try to identify you or whatever, but I'm gonna.
No, that's fine.
Right?
I am, I am a proud guy. I am an immigrant.
Yes, yes, all of that, right? All of that, so you're an immigrant, you're a dad of color, you know, so you got a lot happening. All I needed, because we, I believe diversity and representation is everything because representation matters. And people need to see, children need to see themselves in positions to believe that they can, they can also get there too, right? So it appears that the board has, they voted on a resolution about Black Lives Matter, right? They did some Black Lives Matter resolution. As a dad of color, that, if you get on the board, what type of programs or what type of efforts are you gonna make to help represent young boys of color that seems to be not getting, not graduating? They find themselves in a lot, getting into trouble. They find, they make up most of the population of the alternative schools. They make up the greater population of the Promise Program. Like, what, as a dad of color, what difference can you make for those young men if you're voted to be the next board member, right?
Well, you know, when, when elected, Sandra, I will be not only the only male, I'll be the only black male and the only father. And I believe that will be very much important in order to create, in order to have that diverse perspective. Now, in terms of our, what I've always said, even if you look at, for example, the teaching profession, right? There is only 20% on average of males in elementary and middle school as teachers.
Yeah.
I think as a teacher, I am a good example to a lot of our males that you can be a teacher and you can also be proud of being a teacher and make a difference in the lives of others. So I think I wanna be able to influence more, more males in getting into the teaching profession because there's a disparity there as well, especially with our black males. And I think that we need that representation for our, our, our kids, especially our minority kids in the county. Now, in terms of the schools and what we can do, I think it's important, and I just wanna touch on Black Lives Matter for a little bit. You know, with light of what's going on, I think it's very important in the schools that we provide awareness and make sure we have culturally and racially sensitive curriculum. And we need to also provide training to our, to our teachers to ensure that they are going, trainings in terms of being culturally and racially tolerant so that we are not creating any kind, we're not having any biases that would affect our, our kids. I think it's important, when you look at our children, that programs like Promise, for example, provide for our, our students a way in which they can, they can have another opportunity without having to. Previously, they had, they were, it was just, you know, if they had a misdemeanor, a minor misdemeanor, they would, they would actually sometimes end up out of the schools. Now, we have that alternative to external suspension that provides an opportunity for kids to get counseling while in Promise and then go back into, into the schools and succeed. So I would support programs like that as well. And I think we need to have mentorship for our kids in the schools. We need to have examples of, you know, males who, and minorities who succeeded and have, and have a mentorship program that would help our kids within the public schools as well. So I think, you know, for me, it's important to be representative of our, of our population to ensure that we have representation on the board that would be an example and a role model for our kids to see and to follow. But definitely, I would like to see and encourage males to join the teaching profession more as well.
Okay, so I have, I'm gonna, I have another question. I wanna know about who buys the books and stuff for the school. I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna tell you a story, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
So when my, so my children actually go to two different schools because my daughters, I have twins that are 11, a boy-girl twin. And my daughter's ESC, and my son, he's, he's a mainstream student or whatever, right? And I remember when they went to, when he went to kindergarten, there was an assignment that he was given. And it was like two rows of children. And it was, and what he was supposed to do was pick which, what doesn't belong. And it might have been like they had on hats or something like that. I can't remember the assignment exactly, but I have it somewhere. And it was like, which one doesn't belong? So since it was two rows, I thought it would have been like, on each row, there would have been like one different. Okay, so it's six different things, two different rows. And when you, and it was like, and put a, put a circle or X on something that doesn't belong. Everybody belonged except for the black boy, right? It was, everybody belonged except for the black boy in that assignment. I was like two through, and I, and I actually pulled my son out of, out of that class. I pulled him out of that school and put him somewhere else.
That was in the public school, Sandra?
He was in public school. He goes to a charter right now. And I actually pulled him out, I pulled him out of that class. And I was just like, who, how is it that no one saw this assignment and found a problem with it, right? So I wanna know, who is it that's responsible for ordering books, looking at the assignment? Do they review this stuff before they like start teaching? Because that's like very, like, that's that subtle insidious racism, you know? Like, and, and, and it's worse than you just straight out calling, telling somebody they don't belong. You're kinda like showing it without saying it. So I wanna know, does the school board have anything to do with that? And if you guys have some sort of influence, impact on who it is that's ordering the books and ordering the assignments that they're putting into school? If you can't, will you, how can that be addressed? Someone needs to review what it is that they're teaching.
Well, that is a, you know, that is very concerning. And, you know, I've always said that when we look at the materials, when we look at the curriculum, we have to ensure that they are not biased and they don't have cultural and racial biases within them. And I think that it's important as a district, and I, and I hope you did voice that concern to the district when you noticed that particular assignment. But I think that it's important that we are able to look at the materials and to take input from our parents as well and to have an avenue to get those input. And we should seriously examine any kind of biases that we have within our textbooks or within the materials that we provide within public schools, and those should be removed. You know, I think the school. And those should be removed. Um you know, I think the school board can play a a a role in ensuring. That we listen to the parents and that we 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 ensure that the departments within the district that does purchasing. And that does the evaluating of these materials uh that they're properly vetted to not have these kind of um biases within them. So I would, uh I can assure you that uh that's um a concern that personally I would take up seriously. Um and I think parents of um minorities uh should um voice these concerns they have. To any um particularly uh school board member representing their specific district. And and make sure you're electing people who will actually advocate for changes in those um um underlying biases. So um to and to ma- to answer that question, I I think that, you know, uh I am sorry that you had to go through that experience.
I wasn't the only one cuz everybody in that class in the kindergarten class had that assignment. I'm probably the only one that noticed it, but every. Every kid in that class got that assignment and they took it home and and I don't know if that was the first year, the only year that they did that, but. That was, that's that's an assignment that they have in in the kindergarten class, in that book.
That came from a textbook, right?
Yeah, it's it was one of the um handouts, you know, they, I don't know that, I uh it's one of those reading books or something like that? That they give them in the garden, but it was, it was from the school. It was a, it was one of the side books in the school.
Right, I can assure you, Sandra, if that was brought to my attention as a school board member. I would do everything in my power to either have that book revised or we use a completely different material. Because uh no kid should have to go through those kind of biases and and be exposed to those kind of biases within our school district. Um I, you know, so with those kind of issues, I think it's important that residents. Uh put those forward to their school board members cuz your school board member represents you. And if there are offensive languages or offensive biases existing within our material. Then it should be looked at seriously and we should do everything we can to either replace. Uh um or to make sure they revise those materials to be tolerant of all race and culture and don't have these implicit biases.
Okay, so we have another thing going on, people like, they're like tearing down signs of Confederate generals and all of that stuff. And apparently y'all have some schools with the name Plantation in it. Uh would you um be supportive of those schools being renamed?
Well, what I would say is, any school, not just, not just the ones with uh that that we're looking at, I think we, you know. And in the light of what has been happening recently uh with with the the biases in 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 police department and police brutality. And the unrest that it it has created for our nation, you know, it is important that we look at how we name our schools. And not just how we name our schools, how we name other areas, how we name uh you you know, um specific cities and so on and so forth. It's important that we look at these things and to make sure that it's reflective of the uh of what we stand for as a nation, right? Um you know, so so um I think we should look at these uh school names on a case-by-case basis. Look at why we name them the way we name them, and if we need to change them, then we should change them, that it's reflective in a positive way. Uh so when kids go to those schools, they 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 don't have to feel like, well, why am I going to a school that has some sort of a. Um possibly racial um bias term to it, you know, so I think we do need to look at not just. Not just the ones that are mentioned and that came up now, I think we need to look at how we name all our schools. And in fact. Sandra, as far as I heard, we weren't even supposed to be naming schools after cities, so I'm not even. I'm not even sure how that came about, um you know, but but I think as a district, we should look at the history of how our schools are named. And if we've, if we see there are some biases and if we see that uh there's a need to change, then we should.
Okay, yeah, cuz that's definitely something they're gonna have to revisit, so I think that there's gonna be a lot of stationary upgrades happening. Um but one, so now, so.
Yes, I just wanna say really quick, um not only do we look at at um the original names of different schools. And uh all over the county, but we also, we also must seek um the the input of the community as well. And we also must decide as a board, um what would be in the interest of everyone. Once we look at all the factors surrounding this, but definitely it is a given that if it's a biased name. That really has some racial undertone or or you know, or cultural undertone to it that's negative, then we should consider changing it.
Yeah, we definitely um should, we should do that because it it is, um it is problematic. And you know, now people are more, are becoming more aware of what's going on, and so, you know, yeah, they 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 definitely should be some change. And there should be some sensitivity in the names that they decide to uh to give these schools, on these institutions and um. And different things of the sort, okay?
In the future, in the future, when we name our schools, we ought to really seriously think about the names we give to our schools, right? We ought to make sure that these names are positive, that these names are gonna motivate children. It's something that every child can walk out of that school when they get that degree or that diploma, or they graduate, that they can proudly walk up. Because even the name should have been motivating for them.
All right, and so you had said something earlier when you were talking about you had a program and you had like four hundred students that participated on it. I wanna know how were you able to measure the gains of those students? Like how was it that you were able to measure and see that those students um? You know, really benefited, like what what were, how did you measure that?
Right, well, while we had the program in place, we had um formative assessments and we also did summative assessments. So we kind of looked at where they were when they came in, where they are when they exited. We also look at how they perform on the standardized tests. Um at the time and how they perform uh prior to that, the prior year. And so we could, we could um see significant learning gains as a result. Um to the point where we actually continued that program for several years at Lyons Creek Middle.
Okay.
I don't know if they have it now because I left, I left a long time ago.
All right, and you also, you said you were in a classroom, you you taught for like seventeen years. Um how could you improve um uh teaching in the classroom? Cuz I I I I have, I have a very different, I have a different experience cuz again, I have boy-girl twins, one's on the spectrum, the other one isn't. And I realized that a lot of the teachers, they just kinda teach to the middle. So if you're a student that's like really, you know, like really smart and you can move ahead, they're like, no, we're on section, we're on four point five, that's it. We're not going further, we're only doing four point five. And if you're a student that's kinda maybe stuck on still um three point nine and go math. You, you know, they're like, you better catch up. So what can we do, or I mean, you were in the classroom, like, what was your experience? And like if you were, you had to talk to a frustrated parent like me, like how would you be able to help me navigate through this?
Right, well, first of all, I would say that um number one, teachers must make sure their teaching strategies. Align with the learning preferences of students, right? Um so when you have a a group of students within the classroom, uh it's important to note that there might be differences in their, in their levels. Of um you know, of performance in in their, in their knowledge and so on. So it's important to differentiate instructions, right? It's important to provide different means, differentiate assessments. You know, uh some kids may not necessarily be good at, for example, testing, but maybe may be good at a project-based assignment that would yield the same result. They would still gain knowledge from that. It's important to have um uh different forms of activities, project-based learning. Um having groups within the classroom that you can um separate students based upon their interests, based upon how you assess them and so on. But you're still gaining the same outcome. So I think differentiating is really important in achieving that learning outcome that we want for all our students. Because not one teaching strategy will fit every student, right? Some students learn by visual, some students ha- have kin- kinesthetic ways of learning, some, some kids are audio, you know? Um and for example, uh you may have a kid, uh I've had a kid before with some audio um processing problems. And as a result, uh if you speak most of the time as a teacher, that kid doesn't learn anything. So that kid requires visual that you write it on the board. So we have to be able to have multiple ways in which we reach students within the classroom. And we have to be able to understand individual needs of each student. We can't group everyone as the same. We have to treat them as individuals with different needs and different roads to get to where they need to be. Um so as a teacher, a teacher has to be innovative, creative, and a teacher has to understand the needs of each student within the classroom. And differentiate the struc- uh the strategies, the instructions to reach those students and ensure that they are learning. So within my classroom, I used to have multiple activities taking place. Students were not just assessed on one means. Some students were assessed using um uh project-based uh learning, some students were assessed, we had kids in different groups. Um we consider the 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 best way that a child can learn. If a child is more visual, then there will be stuff on the board. If a child is more um you know, auditory learning, then we look at ways in which we can, we can provide um activities. That would involve listening to different things and so on. And we also have, we emphasize um a lot on 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 teamwork. As a group and being being team-spirited, and members of the team would uplift each other. So for me, as a teacher, when I was teaching, I I, even though, uh you know, sometimes it's emphasized to have a competitive spirit. I felt that it was important to have a team spirit and we are all going to win as a team.
All right, so you said a couple of things. Do you believe, I'm gonna ask, so I'm gonna follow up on what you said. Do you believe that teachers that are in the system right now are trained to teach the way that you're saying? Having different groups where you have the auditory student, the kinetic student, the ones that need to be part of a project. Are the teachers in the classroom right now trained to teach that way?
Right, well, training, uh Sandra, is always an ongoing process. You're never fully trained as a teacher because you're always encountering different things, right? So training should be ongoing and sharing of your experiences. So teachers, um um you know, they used to have what? We call PLC, professional learning communities. Um and in those professional learning communities, teachers would share. The things they encounter within the classroom and we would try to learn from it. So training is important, training should be ongoing, and sharing of best practices should be ongoing. Um so I would say that uh what uh for our teachers, I wouldn't say every teacher is doing that kind of uh. Uh you know, approach in terms of trying to reach every student, but it should be part of our goal to try to be the best we can be. And every school should have um opportunities for teachers to learn from each other, to share best practices. And to have these uh regular weekly learning communities, um so they can make themselves better. And we should never, as a teacher, think that we know it all, we're we're there, we 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 don't need anything else. Because even if you're a twenty, thirty-year teacher, there's still something more you can learn. And and as a teacher, that's what I've discovered, is that every class I've learned something different and how to reach students. Um that I've never had before.
Okay, and the other things, like do the teachers have time to do what it is that you're talking about, right? Because there's all, there's always this testing, they're preparing for the F-CAD, they're preparing for something, preparing for this, you know, so do the teachers have time? In the way the school is set up right now to make those um um to teach the students in all of these different ways?
Right, well, you know, I am, and I'll tell you, Sandra, I'm not a fan of the emphasis we place on standardized testing. Because I really believe it takes the fun out of learning, and I really believe in the end it kind of reduces learning outcome. So we spend sometimes the entire year worrying about taking one test. When we really could have accomplished so much more in terms of the way we teach, the creativity in teaching, the fun in learning. Um so I hope that someday we'll get away from this total emphasis on one factor to determine student learning outcome. You know, so yes, you are right, teachers may not have a lot of time because of the pressure they're under with having to achieve. Uh scores on these standardized tests. Um and as a school board member, I I am hoping that. You know, I can do my part um into seeing how we can have these um. Uh you know, we do have to deal with the the standardized test because it's part of um. Unfortunately, it's part, it's even part of teachers' pay, uh performance-based um pay for teachers. But at the same time, I think we need to do everything we can to alleviate some of the stress that teachers have. So they can spend more time creating quality instructional materials. For example, um as schools, I think we need to provide. More instructional time for teachers so they can spend time planning more for their classrooms. Sometimes they don't have enough time. Forty-one period in the day to plan for your entire day may not be adequate. So we ought to look at, in the future, at how we free up more time for teachers to be able to plan and have. Um you know, uh creative solutions within the classroom.
And I think that's one of the beauties of the position that you have, the at-large seat, is that you you have an opportunity um to go to all of the schools in each city. And kinda see what it is that they need, and like you could at least bring that information back to the board and they can see what they do about that, right? Cuz I think the needs of different cities are are very, very different, and I think that's the, that's the great part of this particular seat is that you can help people. Um throughout um throughout the county.
Yes, yes.
Right, okay, um so so and and I think that's gonna be important cuz again, um even though, you know, they refer to people of color as minorities. Um I believe um people of color uh is the biggest population um in, there is more people of color than it is anybody else. In Broward County, from my understanding, and then, you know, Haitians, Jamaicans, we also have like a Caribbean flavor to what we're, what what's going on. Um how, a- and they have very different needs, right? Cuz I I go, I've gone to a couple of schools before and. Um um and there's no one in the office that can speak Creole to to uh to a parent that comes on campus, you know what I mean? So like, is there anything as a board member you can do to make sure that there's somebody on that campus that can communicate? With the parents that are, that are at, you know, a school, what has a a significant population of people who speak a different language, right? Cuz there's enough Spanish speakers in the county, I'm just gonna say it, cuz it is. But I'm just saying, like, working, um it would, um would that? I, cuz I think it's important, would that be something that you would advocate for?
Right, right, and I'm gonna answer that for you, Sandra, but I just wanted, um I'm gonna say a quick bye to my little guy here cuz he's, he's heading out and.
I see he got his mask on, be safe, man. Hey, how are you? How are you?
Daddy, I wanna say bye really quick, so. He's actually at work with me and 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 heading home, so. All right, so I'll see you later.
Excited to see the head of his mask on, but I have a good day.
Okay, so in terms of that, um I think, uh you know, I was the ESOL coordinator.
I taught ESOL too, I taught ESOL.
You did?
Yes, I did, like my first teaching job, um not, well, I mean, I was already an attorney and I was trying, I was trying, I had the children, so I had to start doing something different. And I used to teach ESOL, I taught like um uh ESOL three and four to, you know, yeah.
Was that in middle school or?
No, 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 it was an adult ed, adult education. Yeah, I did it, um adult ed, yes.
Yes, wonderful, well, you know, that's, that's actually really important, and a lot of those individuals um who who ca- uh you know, come into. The country as immigrants and they go through the ESOL program, they then go through the GED adult program as well. Successful, you know, very successful um um individuals within, within our our society. But yes, I was the ESOL coordinator, and as the coordinator, I was responsible for the ESOL program at Lyons Creek Middle School. And what I did was, I felt that it was important to to also have a conversational um aspect to. You know, to 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 language, right, to the English language. So I um uh helped to pioneer a program at Lyons Creek where we had students who would come in for to. And we had a a Spanish um uh instructor as well. Um they would come in just to learn the basics, how to, how to, you know, how to ask for help, how to ask, um where's the cafeteria. Um you know, um and basic, basic conversation um to be able to 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 assimilate within the school grounds. So I thought that was an important piece so kids can feel comfortable quickly when they speak a different language, right? So that part was important for me and I and I helped to 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 make sure that that program was in place. And we would teach these kids um just before schools start, uh you know, so uh these basic communication skills in English. Um right, and I, that was very helpful, and to be honest, Sandra, I think that it should be in every school. Kids should be able to learn the very basics first um about how to communicate and ask for very basic things, you know? Where's the cafeteria, where's the bathroom, can, you know, can I have a pencil, you know, just basic things that they need to know to feel comfortable. Because they speak a different language. Now, in addition to that, we should have um a strong ESOL program in every school. And we should make sure that um we're we're paying attention and we're monitoring their learning outcome. Um so we should have a team of people who ensure that the ELL students, which in Broward County, it's about twelve percent. Um ELL students that we have, English language learners, about, I think it's about thirty-two thousand students. Um that we need to make sure that they are, they're having the right resources on school grounds to be able to be successful. And that the ESOL program in every school is functioning efficiently, and that should be monitored carefully as well.
Alrighty, so we, you know, we're we're gonna start winding down, so there's a couple of things we had to talk about. Um so my my son's school had a meeting today about what school is gonna look like because of COVID, right? So they're giving parents the option of like staying home, going fifty-fifty, and actually just going right back to school, so.
Right, right.
Wha- what do you go do? You have children. So, what do you go do? You have children in the public school system, I suspect, so.
I do, I do.
And who should decide that? Because and I saw something yesterday that there were some parents protesting at the school board. Saying that they want everybody to go back to school in August, right? Like, what is this? What is this?
Yes, well, you know, the reopening of schools in the pandemic era of coronavirus COVID nineteen. Is quite a challenge for the school district, quite a challenge for everyone. I think, I think we're all looking for answers, but what I would say is this. It's important that we provide our parents with choices. You know, you will have some parents, and look, they sent out a survey, they got over eighty thousand of the surveys back, I think it was eighty-two thousand. And when we look at the survey, the plurality of responses had to do with kids going back on campus, right? That was about thirty-seven percent of parents wanted the kids to come back full-time on campus. And then we also had about twenty-four percent of parents that they want kids to actually do online full-time. No going back to school right now. And we also have, we have another thirty-plus percent, I think it was thirty-three percent or so. Of parents who said, we will be okay with the hybrid model, you know, where they spend two days on campus and two days at home. And then the schools would use, the district would use Wednesday for sanitation purposes, cleaning up the classrooms to get kids back in there on Thursday, right? Now, I think those choices are important. And those choices will be beneficial to the school district as well, and I think it's a nice distribution of the parents' preferences, right? Because it will allow us to have less students within the schools. So if we have twenty-five percent of our kids whose parents want them to stay home. Then, then we won't, we'll have, and then you have another thirty percent or so who want to do hybrid. Then we will have less students to go on campus, so we'll be able to have better social distance, we'll be able to track their behaviors much better. But at the same time, we must enforce safety measures, and that's gonna be very challenging. We're dealing with children. You know, we're dealing with children, getting a child to wear a mask for seven hours, I mean, that's gonna be pretty challenging. And then we have to ensure that the areas are sanitized, and here's another thing we gotta look at. Normally Sandra, we move students from class to class, right? Class changes, bothering the kids. Hundreds of kids rolling down the hallway, going to another class, that's not gonna work. So what I am proposing, and I haven't heard anyone else said this yet, but maybe someone else did, I don't know. But what I am proposing is that we consider a way where we move teachers and not students.
Exactly, I agree with that.
Right, teachers go from class to class, not students.
Right, not students. And this whole idea of just cleaning the school on Wednesday, I think you have to disinfect the desk every time a student gets up. Like, they're gonna have to quadruple their cleaning staff to spray down that room before you bring the next group of students in.
For student, it's not gonna work, and that is the reason. That's the reason I say we need to have a plan where we keep students stationary.
I'm telling you.
Right, keep the students where they are, give them the materials they need, and keep the materials right below their desk. They stay right there for the day, right?
Bring the lunch in a box or whatever.
Deliver the lunch, utilize, utilize your non-instructional staff, they're gonna be busier than they ever were.
And they need a simple cleaning crew too, because I'm telling you. Yeah, that's gonna be a problem.
Right, now just imagine this, if we don't consider keeping students stationary. And we start moving hundreds of kids down the hallway from class to class. And then they're going to a desk where maybe another kid was infected. And then that kid has, and then five other kids sit at that desk for the day.
That's crazy.
So it's important, we have to have really good planning, we have to really think this thing through. I believe personally that, in my opinion, even fifty percent is too much. I think we should, we should have about thirty, thirty-five percent, you know, capacity. And we should work the numbers out so we can achieve that, and I think we can if we really, if we really handle this thing carefully. And we must, in my opinion, move the teachers from class to class, keep the students stationary. Utilize our non-instructional staff to accomplish this, deliver lunches to rooms, and so on and so forth. So there's a lot that goes into all of this. Now, the second component of this really is the e-learning. We need to, you know, it was good for the moment when we had to adjust quickly in March. And we had to get kids an option for learning because we had to close the schools down. And the Canvas system, it works, it was fine, but it's not enough. We need to have enhanced e-learning going forward. We need to be able to figure out how we're gonna possibly have live streaming for our students at home. So we are not totally, we're not so much dependent on the parent. I believe the previous model, it was a lot of parent dependency to get the work done. To help the kids with the assignments and so on. We have to find ways in which we can now have more student-teacher contact. Less parent dependency, because after all, our parents have to work, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Doing all these things, so there's so much to consider in everything that we do. And I think with that being said, it is very important that we put the right person there. And by the way Sandra, I have had experience with that myself. I run a learning center. I have, I had almost three hundred students, right, at my learning center, three hundred subject students. So I had to transition my learning center to an online format, which I did in March. By April first, every single parent, a hundred percent of them were online with my center. And I have, yes, I have over twenty staff, and I did not lay off a single one. So all my staff, yes, they're working online, they're providing live instructions, not, you know, not pulling assignments off. And completing and submitting it. We have live instructors there for every single student, for every single class. For the entire period that they're there. Now, that may not work perfectly with Broward County School District, but I'm just showing you that. It's important to have someone who has already done that, who has the adaptive skills to make that happen. And going forward, as coronavirus, hopefully it slows down at some point, hopefully we find a vaccine. But if it does, if it does slow down, then I will then provide those options that the district is providing as well. For my parents, and I'm looking to do that, I'm looking at what the district is doing. To make sure that my parents have the option of coming to the center at about twenty-five percent capacity. And doing fully online or doing a hybrid format. So I'm kind of doing the same thing the district is doing as well. So I am bringing that skill to the board.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely interesting, because like I said, I had a child that's ESC. And one of the things they want to do, they want all the ESC students to come back. I was like, they must gonna have one-on-one, because that's a whole, there's a whole, there's a whole other set of challenges that come. Which is that population in and of itself, and then, you know, you gotta, and they haven't seen their friends since March. How are you gonna keep them from hugging each other? I mean, the whole dynamic is definitely, we're just gonna have to wait and see.
And, well, it's gonna require. Right, it's gonna require a lot of planning, and it requires individuals to be there who really has the experience and the knowledge. And the ability to adapt, and to think in the mind of every stakeholder. You can't just think in the mind of, say, the students. Of the, you can't think in the mind of just the teachers, in the mind of just the parents. You have to be able to think across all stakeholders. You have to be able to understand the parents' issues, the teachers' issues, the student issues, as well as leadership. So it's important that we have the right person there, and now more so than ever, this open seat. Countywide is an important seat, and we have to make sure that we get this right. That we put someone there who has the ingenuity, the adaptiveness, the experience and the knowledge. To do this and to navigate these stormy waters and move our district forward the best way we can. In providing the highest quality education while trying to keep our kids safe.
Right, and I'm gonna make a comment about the eighty or eighty-two thousand people that responded. I wonder what was the breakdown of that, right? Because again, I grew up, I'm an immigrant, I'm a Haitian, my parents are Haitian, I was born in the Bahamas, but I'm an immigrant. My mother's not getting on anybody's computer to fill out any survey. And I think a significant, you know, not all, you know, they're, not all immigrant populations, some of them will be able to do that. You're gonna have some of them that can't, you're gonna have some people in underserved communities that weren't able to like complete that survey. So I wanna know, I'm hoping, I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna ask you this because you probably don't know. But I really hope that they found a different way to reach out to some people that might not have, you know, been able to. Complete the survey because it was sent online or something like that, right? So they can, because their needs may be very, very different. I mean, I had a mother that worked two jobs when I was growing up. You know, luckily, we were a little bit older by the time she was doing that, because she was a business owner before, and then she came here and had to work. But, you know, we're a little bit older, but she worked two jobs, she can't keep up with whether or not I'm doing my work or not. And, or she couldn't, you know, she couldn't leave us home either. So that's gonna be, I hope that they are reaching out to certain communities where they're gonna need those kids to go to school. Just, right, just because of the logistics of it all.
Correct, well, right, well, just to clarify Sandra, the survey was really to get data. On the overall preference of, you know, of the parents. Now, obviously, the district has over two hundred and seventy thousand kids in regular schools. So the survey was probably about one, you know, one-third, a little bit less than one-third of the entire student body that we have. But nevertheless, it was a good indicator as to what the preference, the preference of the parents are, and also the students, as well as. As well as teachers. So, but the survey result will not be used to say, well, because your child, your parent didn't fill out the survey. Then you're gonna have to just take what we give you. No, that's not how it works. They also go into, they're now doing another survey to see specifically what you as a parent want. So if your child is Jordan, what do you want Jordan to do? Do you want Jordan to come to school on full-time? Do you want Jordan to be a hybrid student? Or do you want Jordan to be an at-home e-learning or virtual Broward school student? So you now have those choices coming your way again to determine what you want specifically for your child. Now, in addition to that, let's just say they sent you that email, you didn't get it. They're going to also call you after July sixth, if they hear from you, to find out exactly what you want for your child. So the good news is, the school district is giving us choices, and even though you see those parents protesting. They're protesting because the option was not there initially to have kids go to school five days a week. So those parents want that option to be on the table. And so I believe the district is now going to provide that option, but not all parents need to choose that option, those are parents who.
But I think there's one of the schools, I don't know if it's Cypress High School, there's a high school that has like five thousand students in it. And they're like, there's no way in the world they're gonna be able to do that even if it's fifty percent or something like that, right?
Right, but here's the thing though, we have to look at the result of the survey. The result of the survey says approximately thirty-seven percent of parents want to go back full-time. So we're looking at, even with Cypress Bay High School, even though it's over four thousand students. You know, you see a small group of parents protesting to get it on the table that kids can go back full-time. But the survey shows on about one-third of parents say they want to do that. So even at Cypress Bay, it's probably gonna be about thirty-five percent of parents who want to go back full-time. But there will still be some logistical problems with a school of that capacity. To be able to, even with thirty-five percent going back full-time, and then you have the other hybrid approach. Which means some kids will be there as well two days a week, it's going to be a bit problematic. We have to work through those issues.
Yeah, they're gonna have to work through that, alright. And so school safety, that's the other thing that we're all concerned about. And even like, and in school safety in the terms of, in the era of COVID, that's. Because people gonna come to school wearing masks now, you know.
Right, right, well, you know. Right, well, you know, we're still going to follow the same measures of safety we had before. Kids will have to have student IDs, they will have to check in with their student IDs. We're obviously not gonna let any strangers on campus. I mean, we're gonna follow all the safety measures put in place. That came before and after Stoneman and Douglas, right? So we're gonna have the single-point entries, we're going to have, students having to wear IDs a hundred percent of the time, and so on and so forth. So all of that will still be in place, but we have another added layer of safety. Which is keeping kids safe, making sure they're wearing their mask, making sure they're practicing social distancing. I mean, that's gonna require a heavy load, especially on our non-instructional staff, because how else are we gonna, how else are we gonna enforce this? We're gonna have, I mean, teachers are gonna be in the rooms teaching, right? Teachers have their own things that they're gonna have to deal with in the classroom. So the non-instructional staff, I would imagine, are going to be utilized in ways they've never seen before. And they're going to have to work with the district in taking on some more responsibilities to ensure that the kids are safe. Not just safe from the things we were worrying about before, but we have a new enemy, it's called COVID nineteen. And COVID nineteen does not care who we are, it does not care who our political parties are, it does not care what our race or nationality is. It doesn't discriminate, this is a common enemy, and we have to unite together. As a district and quite frankly, as a country, to be able to fight this new enemy. Because it is an enemy that is, that can destroy us if we don't do the right things to make sure that everyone is safe. And if we don't do the right things to make sure our kids are safe. And by the way Sandra, if we don't make sure our kids are safe. Then absolutely, we're not making sure our parents are safe, and we're definitely not making sure our grandparents are safe. Because they're gonna take this thing back to everybody else around them. So this is, this is not just a school issue, this is a community collective issue that will impact all of us if we don't get it right.
Yeah, that's right. So this is the toughest question that I'm gonna ask you tonight, and then we're gonna wrap up. So I've been told that you ran for different positions before, and now you wanna be part of the school board. Tell us why you did that and like why you think this is the best fit for you.
Right, well, you know, Sandra, even before I ran for any office, I was always a community servant. I was the president of the Kiwanis of Lauderdale, even before I ever ran for office. I served communities in many different ways, but once I see a problem, I, and I believe that I can address it. And I believe that it's an issue, then I want to have a voice. So there's nothing wrong, and I'll tell everyone this, there's nothing wrong in running for a position in, or an office. In your community, in your city, if you see there is an issue or issues that you believe you can make a difference. And it is commendable, whether you win or you lose, it is commendable to anyone who would go out there, put themselves out there. And really try to make a difference. I mean, that is a very noble thing to do. So, you know, I ran in Sunrise before and in Plantation because there were issues that I was legitimately concerned about. In Sunrise, there were issues that I was concerned about how we spend money. And whether or not we were taxing our residents too much, and there were some other issues that I had some concerns about. In terms of building a water park in the city and so on, that I didn't feel was the best use of taxpayers' money. So I wanted to make sure that our city was running accordingly and meeting the needs of the residents. Now, when the seat became open for Broward County School Board. And in light of the challenges that I saw the school district was having. And in light of the fact that I have significant experience as an educator and significant knowledge. I felt, and as a business owner of a learning center, I felt that since this seat is open. It is really important that we put the person there who can move the district forward. Because we are living in times that I think is important, that someone is there. That has the knowledge and the experience and the expertise to make a difference. So I am running for this seat because I am qualified. And I have a deep interest in the issues that surround our district. It's affecting all of us, it's affecting my children, your children, and I believe that I can make a difference when I get there.
Alright, so tell people how they can get in touch with you, how they can give you money, how they can volunteer for your campaign. So give us all those social media handles, website, all that stuff.
Yes, well, I am, I am, I am on Facebook, I am also on Twitter, I am on Instagram. Just look for, on Instagram, Jeff Holness, on Twitter, Holness Jeff. I'm also on Facebook, you can just look for Jeff Holness for Broward County Schools. My website is www.jeffholness.com. And on my website, you will see a significant amount of issues that I, you know, might take on major issues rather. That I stand for and that I'd like to see changes, and you'll also see other information on there. You can also donate online at www.jeffholness.com as well. And remember, the primary is August eighteenth. And I do hope I can have your vote on August eighteenth. I believe that I have what it takes to really move this district forward. And it's important as a county that we get this right, because our children's lives are at stake.
Alright, and so we also want to encourage people to request their vote by mail ballots. I think they, some people might have done that already. I think the county, the Broward SOE's office sent something out for you to request it, also to update your signature. And that's all due before July the twentieth of twenty twenty. As Jeff Holness said, Jeff said, is that his election is August eighteen, twenty twenty, right?
Yes, August eighteen, twenty twenty, yes.
So you have the last word.
Well, as you can see in the backdrop, I have two sons. I would encourage everyone, we do need representation for our communities. And I'm asking everyone to vote for a father, because there is no father on Broward County School Board. And you're seeing an experience and knowledge of everyone here who will make a significant difference in the lives of our sons and our daughters, and our grandsons and granddaughters.
Alrighty, have a good one. Thank you for taking the time to talk to me.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.